This one.
All right, just a real quick item of order. We do have closed session items tonight that are of high importance. In order to make sure that we're not considering very important things after 11:00 PM, I've asked a couple of council members, sorry to catch everybody, but if we end up not hearing everything tonight in order to do that, that might be a possibility. Again, we will need to go to closed session tonight. And due to the nature of it, I just don't want us to be considering that too late at night when we're really short on sleep. So if anybody's here for some of these later items, I'll apologize in advance if we end up deferring them until the first meeting in February. So with that said, I will now move to public hearing number four. We are back in session and Amanda Bunce is presenting.
Yes, so this is a 2030 land use map amendment and a rezoning case called Trinity Apex PUD. It's located along East Williams Street, south of US-1, specifically in this location. So just to orient you, the fire station is in generally this location. The site is heavily wooded with the exception of one single-family dwelling here. And generally speaking, the surrounding properties are vacant, it's residential to the south, and some non-residential uses to the west. The property is owned residential agriculture and the surrounding zoning to the north is non-residential and you have residential agriculture to the east and the south. And then the proposed Veridia development is across the highway. The proposed zoning is planning development conditional zoning. The site is about 25 and a half acres. 2030 land use map designates this property as medium-high and high-density residential. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the 2030 land use map to add office employment and commercial services to that land use classification. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting and you have that report in your packet. The proposed PUD is consistent with the proposed 2030 land use map amendment and specifically with the recommendations of Advance Apex. If this rezoning is approved and the land use map amendment is approved, this amendment will be recommended to be carried over into Advance Apex. We support the land use map amendment in the context of the proposed rezoning.
About that real fast while we're on it, is the 2040 south of this parcel, is that also going to kind of be a little different?
So generally speaking, this area remains unchanged in the Advance Apex recommendation. And you'll see as we get into the PUD, there are non-residential uses proposed along the frontage of this lot. And we are in support of that in the context of the rezoning that's being proposed.
Is there a reason the 2045 one doesn't have that kind of similar mix or the red and blue further to the south as well?
So generally speaking, as you move from US-1 south to where the bypass picks up and East Williams Street continues, you see a transition from the heavier intense commercial uses down to more higher-density residential use. So it's a transition from commercial, high-density residential, down to the single-family areas that are further south. So it's a natural transition as you head south on 55. So this is an overall view of the plan and this is, as Shannon talked about earlier tonight, this is the proposed Jesse Commons development, the conceptual plan that was approved with the rezoning. This is not an approved site plan, but this is the conceptual layout. And so, as you can see, this plan does show connectivity to the Jesse Commons development. Here's a better view of the proposed PUD. There are three land use areas within this PUD. There is a commercial services area with a cap of 4,000 square feet, an office employment area with a cap of 25,000 square feet, and then the remainder is residential development for multifamily or congregant care facility is another multifamily use listed at a maximum density of 14.5 dwelling units an acre or a maximum of 295 units. All the lists of uses are in your staff report, but generally retail uses here, office uses here, hotel would be allowed in both. And that's just a highlight of the uses permitted. The maximum building height for the residential area is proposed at five stories or 60 feet. And for the non-residential area up front is proposed at 50 feet. Generally speaking, the buffers proposed by this planning development are consistent with that required by the UDO. There are some exceptions. They've increased the buffer width along the northern and southern boundaries from either a 10 or a 20-foot to a 30-foot type B buffer. Along the east, you have Middle Creek, so there's going to be a large buffer there regardless of what happens. Along East Williams Street, the buffer is, as required, a 30-foot type E. And then along the Minor Collector Street and the Major Collector Street, which is shown on our transportation plan and which would align with the east-west Major Collector and the Horton Park development you've recently approved, there is proposed a 10-foot type B buffer. They are proposing to provide the required amount of resource conservation area at 20%. Parking standards will be per the UDO standards. There are architecture standards, architectural standards proposed for both the non-residential and the residential areas. There's conceptual rendering of an apartment development. This is conceptual only, but typically the zoning conditions that are proposed are what we have typically been seeing for apartment development in Apex recently with restrictions on materials, variations in roof height, breaking up massing of buildings, for example. The site will be served by Town of Apex Water and Sewer Services. This site is dependent upon the construction of the Middle Creek Regional Pump Station that is to the south and east of here, as is the Colby Crossing subdivision, Horton Park subdivisions. So no plat approvals can be received, so basically no COs issued until that pump station is operational. There was a TIA conducted for this site and there is a long list of road improvements that will be required for development of this property, additional lanes and right-of-way dedication along 55, the construction of the roadways that you see on the plan, which includes sidewalk, either a sidewalk on both sides or a side path along one side, in some cases 10-foot side path. As, there are two points of cross-access that are proposed to connect to this part of the Jesse Commons development. This is where the minor, you agreed to remove the Minor Collector Street from the plan and so there will be cross-access to ensure connectivity in this location as well. As the site currently only has one point of access, there is a limitation of no more than 100 residential units, multifamily units. That's a UDO requirement, but it's listed in the transportation conditions as well. Access is by right-in and right-out movement. There will be a left-turn lane constructed to allow a left turn into the site, but anyone headed toward Holly Springs on 55 would need to turn out right, go up to the future Jesse Drive intersection where there will be improvements required, and then do a U-turn to come back south. That is the safest way to make that left-turn movement at that location, given traffic volumes on 55. Parks and Rec and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission recommended a fee in lieu for this site. Planning staff recommends approval of the 2030 land use map amendment as well as the rezoning with the conditions as proposed by the applicant and subject to the approval of the requested transportation plan amendment, which you did approve earlier tonight. The planning board recommended unanimous approval of this rezoning and the land use map amendment. Approval of the rezoning is reasonable because the district is consistent with the requested land use map amendment. It's in the public interest because it will allow for a commercial-to-office transition of non-residential uses from the north along the East Williams Street frontage, as well as multifamily development that will support the non-residential areas to the north. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can you speak to the, what appears to me to be a misalignment of the road and the one toward Veridia on the map? And maybe we're too soon to talk about that, but I couldn't help but notice it.
So the approved plan for Veridia includes a traffic signal location here, so a major entrance into the development and a future traffic signal in this location. So there would be, need to be coordination or waiting upon this area to redevelop. So the east-west Major Collector basically kind of does a flowing motion like this through these sites. So that is why a traffic signal would not be here. In addition, it's proximity to Jesse Drive. So you would want to have that separation between signals on a major road such as 55.
Okay. Is that one on, I'm not sure, I don't know much about it. Is that a right-in, right-out proposed on the other side too?
Up here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to find the conditions once again. What page are they on? Do you have any idea?
The uses permitted?
Yeah, the conditions, any conditions on this?
Okay, so the uses are listed on page two and three of your staff report. Buffers are listed on page four.
Oh, yeah.
And then the traffic conditions are seven and eight.
We amended our buffers recently. 30-foot type E on East Williams Street, didn't we not make a change to that one?
For non-residential development, the tight buffer did not change. It did for residential.
Okay.
So this is consistent with the UDO.
All right, thanks. Is there an applicant that wishes to speak?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicants and the owners in this case. And recognizing that it's late and you have other matters in business to attend to, I will be as succinct as possible. I made it a great job summarizing the nuts and bolts of the request before you. It's a mixed-use development that contemplates up to around 300 apartments and up to 29,000 square feet of office and retail or commercial services. The offices is 25,000 square feet of that and the commercial services is 4,000 square feet. The applicant team, we believe this is a good plan for this location, given the, given the site's proximity and frontage on Highway 55, which is a heavily traveled corridor, as you all are aware, as well as the town's long-range plans for development in this area to include not only Jesse Commons to the north of the site, but also the significant Veridia project that's planned for across 55. We think that having commercial services and office up along 55 and then transitioning to residential, it makes good planning sense. It will, the planned residential will also support the future commercial that's going to be developed in that area and, as Amanda mentioned. Further to that, as you all are aware, Horton Park is to the east of this significant water feature. I'll call it, for lack of a better way to put it, as you folks are aware, there's a creek back there and there's a lot of wetlands. There will be connectivity one day. Horton Park is planned for a combination of mostly single-family and townhomes. There is some multifamily associated with that, but that's closer up to Jesse Drive. The good news is that by adding higher densities than we have in Horton Park here, Mother Nature has built-in buffers between those uses. And so you can kind of tuck a decent amount of density into this location, absorb the significant road infrastructure that is planned for that area. I mean, as you can see, there are, there's a large undevelopable area included in the site. And so in order to navigate the town's Collector Street system from a north-to-south standpoint as well as east-to-west, you start to lose a lot of land. You start to absorb a lot of cost. And so we think it makes a lot of planning sense. We think it makes a lot of business sense to be able to deliver commercial services with residential at the densities that we've proposed in this location. We think it's a case that's appropriately conditioned with respect to buffers as well as the architectural standards that you all are seeing in most cases. And then lastly, again, the significant road infrastructure, it's not only the Collector Street, but the road infrastructure that's required by the TIA that was performed as part of this process is significant. And as Amanda mentioned, until there's a second point of access, the most that they can get from a yield standpoint is 100 units. And a lot of those road improvements are front-loaded as part of this process. And so there is a lot of benefit that will come associated with the project from a frontage standpoint, as well as offsites, really with the initial phase of this project. And so we think all that, generally speaking, will be a public benefit. Two additional things. One, as Amanda mentioned, there was a planning board review of this case last night and they recommended unanimously for approval. And then lastly, we have agreed to add a condition to the case to provide that the first building constructed upon the office employment parcel within the PUD shall include the installation of solar panels and system with a minimum 20 kilowatt capacity. That was something that Mr. Jensen requested of the applicant and the applicant was able to provide. And so with that, again, recognizing the time is short and I think there are folks here who are signed up to speak on this case, I'm here to answer any questions you all may have, but we respectfully request you all's support of the case. Thanks.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Barron before we open the public hearing?
I'm delighted you're doing the solar.
I figured you would be.
I hope the restriction of, on the first building is not too restrictive.
Well, we don't know how many buildings you can fit over there and I just didn't want to put...
Okay. Do the first one, just in case.
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate that.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Barron. So I'll open the public hearing and I'm not sure who to call. It looks like a law firm, Tori, Ingrid, Joel, and Paige. I'm not really sure. Or is this one person? I don't mean to disrespect, but what, which name is it?
We are the sellers.
Okay, is it more than one person? Oh, are these all first names?
Yes.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Which one, which one are you?
I am Toy Michelle Page.
Toy, Michelle, Toy Page?
Yes, I am.
All right, very good. Ms. Page, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, thank you so much for allowing us to speak to you at this late hour. I will re-brief. I represent my brother and sister, Ingrid and Joel Page. We are majority, we are majority owners of the land and therefore sellers. And I say majority because the Page family was a large family. We had to pull together 23 family members to get this done. It was not, thank you. It was not an easy task, but we did get it done. We are working a little differently with the developer. We've been pretty much involved in every step of every painful piece of everything. So we know that we have crossed a lot of Ts, dotted a lot of Is, and pretty much done everything that has been asked of us. The land has been in our family for about 78 years. So we're very proud that our folks were able to acquire such a large amount of land, actually on both sides of 55. As children, we ran up and down both sides because it's all our property and it looks just like it looked then. So we're pretty excited that we could be a part of something that's going to give some new life, some new breath, some new energy to that part of 55. Apex is already an area that across the country, people want to come and we're just very excited to be a part of it. So we just wanted to ask for your support and approval and again, we appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Page. And having reached the end of the list, I'll close the public hearing. Was this the Page family?
We're three of 70% of all the shares.
All right. Very good. Wasn't, one of them wasn't Cynthia, was it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know Cynthia, she and I sat next to each other in homeroom a long time. Well, no, we were alphabetized, Olive and Page, we were alphabetized. But we were friends. We were friends. Tell her I said hello. I will close the public hearing. Of course I remember Cynthia.
That's great.
You were that, oh, that's why I was saying...
Yeah, she was great. With that, now I'll refer the matter back to council to see if there is a discussion leading to a possible motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion on the motion to approve?
Does that include the additional conditions?
With the additional conditions?
With the solar condition?
That were added by Mr. Barron?
I have the word.
And you have the wording? Okay, very good.
With the solar condition.
All right. Reluctantly it sounded. All right.
He loves it.
Any discussion?
I think it's kind of, it'll be kind of unique, kind of mixed-use, not quite mixed-use like we were talking about before, but kind of similar. And it'll be, they'll be able to walk hopefully to the shops that will be retail-relevant to the people that will future live there. So, yeah, I think it's nice and the roundabout's nice. There was a public art mention, by the way, and I, it was my way, if I had my way, I'm not a public art expert necessarily, but that roundabout might be a good spot for the, for the art.
Absolutely.
If it's engineering-ly capable. So that'd be my input to that. I know it says staff in there, right? I saw that part and I was like, seems like it'd be a good spot, so.
All right.
I love hearing stories of old Apex. I think that's pretty cool.
Yeah?
I heard there's a pedestal available for artwork.
All right, if there's, it sounds like kind of time to call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Please give Cynthia my regards. We now go to public hearing number five and this is the UDO amendments. Ms. Bunce again.
Yes, I get the rest of the show until closed sessions. Okay. The next rezoning, excuse me, the next is amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. There's five amendments. I'll pause briefly just between each one to see if you have questions. So the first amendment should be to a familiar section. This section was amended last month to allow Town of Apex development projects to proceed as minor site plans instead of major. This will add sites designated as North Carolina certified sites by the North Carolina Department of Commerce to allow those type of sites to qualify as a, or be processed as a minor site plan as opposed to a major site plan. And this is recommended by the Economic Development Committee. Any questions? Okay. The next amendment comes out of the planning committee. And this is in order to add a new type of window sign called interactive digital displays. And so it will be required, a permit will be required for this type of window sign. Generally, window signs do not require permits, but a permit will be required for this so we can check to ensure all standards are met. So an interactive digital display is a digital window sign that is placed on the inside of a window or door and has a display area that changes at a predetermined frequency and upon a person interacting directly with the sign. This type of window sign shall meet the conditions listed above that apply to all window signs in addition to the following. Such sign shall only be placed in a window that is angled at at least 45 degrees from the street. The display area shall not exceed three square feet. The display area of the sign shall remain static for at least five minutes unless a person is actively using the interactive features of the display area. Such sign shall be equipped with automatic dimming technology that adjusts the sign's brightness in direct correlation with the natural ambient light conditions. And the brightness shall not exceed six-foot candles from dusk to dawn when measured one foot from the center of the display area. The remainder of the amendments in the sign section just ensure that this type of sign is not interpreted as either animated sign or changeable copy sign. Be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
You said 45-degree angle, so if the street goes like this, it has to be turned a little bit?
Right, so if you think about downtown, the entrances where you have like the angle, like the doorway is recessed.
Right.
Yeah.
The thought is safety of brightness of signs?
Right, so it's to prevent the distraction. So it's intended for people that are going to be at that business and to keep the glare off the street.
I don't know, does almost every business have a recessed door?
No, they don't all have an angle. There are several that do, but not all of them have a 45-degree angle.
So if I have a flat window, I can't put an interactive sign on a flat window?
That's correct.
Facing the street?
That's correct.
And we're worried that the illumination would be a distraction?
That is one of the concerns, yes.
Okay, I'm not sure I follow that. What's the auto-dimming feature? What is the, what's that about?
So is, so basically if a storm comes up during the day, you know, it gets darker when the clouds come, you don't have the brightness that is still on...
Like I can, like...
Right, so it's gonna, it's gonna sense that it's not, it's like if you have your phone set on auto-dimming. So if you go into a darker room, it's gonna dim. Or if you go into the bright sun, it automatically brightens so you can actually see it. So that's what that technology is.
Okay. I follow that. I don't know if I, council, I don't know if I agree with the 45 angle, but we can progress, I guess.
I can speak to that. I was one that suggested it. I was imagining a scenario that every single storefront would potentially have this display and that was not a scenario that I thought would be a very good aspect for downtown. It would just be too much, I think. And so this was going to limit the possible uses as well as, when it's 45 degrees, you're not getting the entire power of the screen right out, right on the road and on the sidewalk. So that was the, it was to try to not have every storefront be, be having a screen like that, be allowed to have a screen.
I follow you. Does the auto-dimming feature like dim after a certain amount of time of non-use?
So the way the automatic dimming technology works is it senses the light that's reaching the sign, just as the same concept as your phone.
Okay. So it doesn't go to sleep after a certain amount of non-use?
Right, no, it doesn't go to sleep and go dark completely. The requirement, as we've written it, is that the sign image cannot change any more frequently than five minutes. So it can't be in a constant state of change. So it has, there has to be a delay of five minutes unless someone is standing right there at it and interacting with it.
Okay, so I don't know if I, so does it auto-dim if somebody doesn't use it for a certain amount of time? Like in the middle of the day, it's at X brightness and then nobody uses it for five minutes, does it dim down a little bit?
No, the, the lighting level would stay the same unless the lighting conditions due to clouds or time of day changed.
Okay, only on the sunlight that's coming in.
Right, right.
All right. Just my thought, actually, I was concerned about this and I'm really glad that you guys went through and thought through very, I mean, not that I'm surprised, but I'm really glad that you thought through a lot of these conditions that find the balance between the allowable use. Because the whole concept is, is good that you have, it's almost like people will stick pieces of paper up in their window or in the glass, but the problem when you do it digitally is it can be super-bright, it can be updating too often and be a real nuisance or annoyance. We don't want Vegas. But at the same time, we want to allow technology to be used appropriately. And if somebody can go up and see something they like and touch it, they're interacting with it, I think that's really good. I think you've covered a lot of the bases. I'm really glad that y'all looked through that. So that's all.
I guess the one question I still have is, are those actually 45 degrees down? Did you check that out, the windows?
We are under...
If you had that question mark.
Right, so we are under the belief that it is, that it would meet that standard at that location.
If they don't, then we can always change the standard a bit.
Tweak the angle.
I just don't know whether they're 45 degrees or deeper.
Yeah.
That's all.
Those are, those are angled pretty well.
I think they are, but...
Yeah.
And you'd think they'd pick 45 because...
Can you take your compass over there or protractor?
Protractor, there you go.
Which one of those you want?
Well, it's a good point. What if it's not 45 degrees? I mean, what, are we, I mean, that's our standard.
I think what I heard was if the angle's off a bit and we need to adjust it, we can make a minor adjustment to the number.
Yeah, I think the idea was like 30, once you get kind of near perpendicular, it might be, it would look the same as if it was flat.
Yeah.
Or parallel the road. So that's, that's the, that was a, we tried to, you know, a number.
We talked, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't want to get hung up on the number, because I think we can revisit that if we find there's a complication.
Very, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the, moving on. The next amendment is to add two uses to the office and institutional zoning district and that would be pet services and tailor shop. So pet services is like pet daycare, grooming, it's not a retail establishment. And of course, you know what a tailor shop is. Dry cleaner is already allowed in O&amp;I and often tailors are located inside of a dry cleaners. And veterinary clinic is already allowed in office and institutional. So it would seem like a doggy day spa would be allowed as well. And so staff is proposing this change.
Was that one initiated by, so a business owner or is it just you guys kind of?
We noticed that there was an inconsistency there, so it's a staff, staff proposal. The next amendment is simply codifying an interpretation that's been longstanding. And so generally speaking, there are certain things that are allowed to encroach into building setbacks. Candle levers or projections that hang, that project from a building but don't touch the ground are not allowed to encroach into side yard setbacks. But now we have fireplaces that don't necessarily go all, chimneys that don't go all the way to the ground, they're candle levered. And so the interpretation is that a candle lever chimney can encroach the same as a chimney that goes all the way to the ground. So that's, that's that proposal. Any questions? And finally, we missed one minor parking change when we did our big update last July. And so we're proposing to reduce the amount of parking required for indoor sales area for uses that follow this parking schedule from one per 200 to one per 300 square feet. Staff does recommend approval of all these amendments and the planning board recommended approval unanimously at the meeting last night.
Comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, public hearing, thanks, sorry. I had already dismissed it because no one signed up. So I'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Thank you for, we gotta do it right, though, I know. So is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, still? All right. All right. And is there a discussion on the motion?
I'm concerned about that angle of the sign.
All right.
We're holding ourselves to a number that I feel like is, I don't know, I feel like there should be some leeway, because we don't know if all those angles are, well, if somebody comes in at 40 degrees and they literally get out there and measure it, and I don't know, I feel like there should be a range.
Do you think that we, do you think we can follow up on that? And then, if you need to make a minor adjustment, you can let us know?
We'll let you know if we, if it proves to be problematic.
All right.
We don't anticipate a lot of these signs that are very expensive.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We've concluded our public hearings. I am noting that it is 10:14. I don't want to keep people from the unfinished business unnecessarily, because I appreciate, who stayed for that, by the way? Okay. If it please, council, maybe we can hear this. It is not a public hearing, so hopefully we can process through this one.
All in favor.
All right. Ms. Bunce?
Just to reorient you to the sites located on Holt Road in this location, it's about 28 acres, and the request is for planned unit development to locate age-restricted housing. At the last meeting in December, the public hearing was closed, and you continued it to this meeting. I will say that the applicant did add the two solar conditions that they agreed to at the December 18th public hearing, that those have been added into the staff report and into the PUD documents. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Those are the only changes since last month.
Could you define age-restricted again?
Yes, so, not want to get this wrong.
Has to be over 20 years old.
It's, oh my goodness, okay, at least 80% of the occupied dwelling units in the community must be occupied by at least one occupant who is 55 years of age or older.
Enforceable by the HOA, is that who enforces that?
I believe that would be enforced by the HOA. And then there's rules that are, that have to be complied with, that are issued by HUD for verification of occupancy requirements.
Okay. I'm a little fuzzy on how that's implemented or enforced as well. Can you speak?
It would be enforced by the HOA.
Okay, all right.
If they, do they have the teeth to enforce it, I guess?
Well, it would be their battle, if you will, not the town's, right? The town doesn't really have any part of that.
Is it a zoning condition?
It is a zoning condition, that it comply in accordance with the Federal Housing for Older Persons Act of 1995, in accordance with the provisions, then there are three standards that are listed in your staff report.
I've really not looked at this issue, is whether we could enforce it. I have to make some comparisons.
But in terms of including that as a condition in rezoning, that's not a problem. You don't perceive that to be a problem?
I don't perceive it to be a problem.
Okay.
It's not...
The question is whether you want to be in the role of enforcing.
Yeah, I kind of would prefer the town not be in that, yeah.
Right.
I think, I think from the standpoint of if we want, if we want to encourage the HOA covenants to state stuff like that, that's fine, but I think it's, I don't know that the town wants to be in that.
I don't think so.
Mr. Barron, I see you on your feet. Do you have something germane to add?
So, the HOA will have to file on a semi-annual, annual basis, reporting information to the federal government associated with maintaining compliance with the requirements that Amanda shared. And so, the policing mechanism is, we offer it as a zoning condition. You all know that when the covenants get recorded, that it's going to be self-policed. They have to do it in order to maintain compliance with the federal regulations.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any, any thoughts? Okay, all right, just checking.
That's as much as I know about.
Okay, all right.
I'd be happy to look into it independently, but I can't answer that question.
I think it is a parallel effort, low backburner kind of thing. I think it'd be interesting to know at some point. All right, with that said, we've got the presentation to us. It's an unfinished business item. I would entertain a motion if anybody's ready to make one.
So, maybe I'll speak up a little bit. So, I was initially against this due to walkability concerns I had, especially with that part, the parcel that's missing in the middle. I've learned more about that, and I've learned that it's not a simple task of just building, trying to give them to build a sidewalk along Holt Road. There's slope issues and easement issues that, there's a reason they didn't agree to it, because it's very complicated. So, the other parts of the development, I like, I like the solar, I like the senior-oriented. I think it's walkable internally, and so, as I've learned more, I think I have a change of heart on this one, so that's maybe helpful for this meeting to proceed, but...
It's very open-minded of you.
Are you making a motion?
It feels like it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for approval. Discussion?
I would like to say that I would like my counsel to consider Mr. Morris's family situation when they consider raising taxes. Here's an individual who can no longer afford his property taxes, from what he told us, and our decisions impact a lot of people in a lot of different ways, and his tax bill has gotten to the point in Wake County where he can no longer afford it. So, please consider that as we vote on potential tax increases going forward.